You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Okay, welcome. We'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for November 15, 2023 to order. Item one, to consider and if appropriate approve the Board of Selectmen minutes of November 1, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so I move seconded. Any edits, corrections, errors? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passed. Item two, can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss tax foreclosure settlement?
So moved.
Second.
Move seconded. For the record, we'll invite in attorney Ceciola into the executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Just to clarify, I did state prior to going to executive session, I referred to item number two. Item number two, tax appeals, is not being, there's nothing to discuss tonight. We went in to discuss item three, which was another executive session, which I did say a tax foreclosure settlement. It's just so the numbering was, I erred on my part. Item four, can I get a motion to consider and if appropriate approve the proposed settlement in the town of Branford versus Aaron Gianni as trustee of the Malarni Family Trust at L tax foreclosure case?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Item five, to consider and appropriate approval recommendation from the Solid Waste Management Commission to award the contract for rubbish collection from town public receptacles.
Tyler Bound, Sustainability and Compliance Manager.
I'm Paul Muniz, the chairman of the Solid Waste Management Commission.
So we had four bids for this bid process. One was actually a no bid by All American Waste, and then the lowest bid came in at $151,837 from ACA Landscaping LLC. The next highest was about $25,000 higher.
And the nature of the bid is to collect something, a new term we're using, rubbish, which is combined trash and recycling materials at between 36 and 50 specific locations around Town Green, Stony Creek, and Short Beach, where there are decorative or specific trash barrel or collection containers. The goal is to have those materials collected on a daily basis, so up to seven days per week, 52 weeks a year, at these specific locations, for the benefit of the residents, for the convenience of using the public facilities. Have that trash collected. We are unable to have public works or parks and rec perform without.
And just to clarify, the numbers that you were in for the full three years, not...
Right.
Yeah.
Well, two and a half.
Two and a half.
Two years, seven months.
Seven months, correct.
Remainder of this year as in the next two fiscal years.
Right.
All right, just wanted to clarify. All right.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yeah, Solid Waste Management Commission recommended the award to ACA.
All right, great. It's been moved seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item six, to consider if appropriate waive the performance bond for the yard waste and leaf collection contract.
So the yard waste and leaf collection contract was approved by this board at a previous meeting. Contract has been initiated. Service has been acceptable. There was a term in the RFP and the contract documents that indicated the use or the application of a performance bond. I believe that the term in the contract documents said that the town may require a performance bond. The successful low bidder has been unable to obtain a performance bond because the value of the contract is too low for the bonding company to bond. So we would make a recommendation to continue with the contract that I believe has been executed without application of a performance bond to the work.
Right. And another factor of this is that our contract language actually got carried over for the performance bond from a previous contract that we worked on this year. We basically had two sets of boilerplates in a way, and we basically moved the one that asked for a performance bond to this contract. And even though it is such a low amount, we have had other contracts in our fiscal year this year going to contract without a performance bond.
Of similar value.
Right.
Now, I would just add, when this issue came up, there was, I believe, the finance department recommended taking this for action in full transparency of the Board of Selectmen. So it's on record, and that, you know, for many future years of audits, that this action was taken. So as stated, I think this is, you know, typically, looking at other contracts, we do not require this. This was kind of, as Tyler explained, pulled from a much larger...
Yeah, it came from the curbside contract collection, and kind of trickled down into other contracts.
Which I'll also mention, a lesson learned potentially would be for the town to identify standard, call it boilerplate language regarding bid and performance bonds relative to RFP sizes.
Agreed.
And the commission's all for this, too.
We don't want the contract to lapse.
Right.
We'd have to go back out to bid.
And the service to date?
Has been very good.
Great, yeah.
All right.
I'll move it.
All right. Move seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for your... Item seven, green news, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Jonathan Rithington for the use of the Town Green on November 18, 2023, from 3:00 p.m. to 4:30 p.m., to hold a wedding ceremony.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from Parks and Recreation Department for the use of the Town Green on Saturday, November 25, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., to hold the annual holiday tree lighting parade.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All, in discussion, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from Jabal Lubovic of the Shoreline for the use of the Town Green from December 4 through December 18, 2023, for the placement of the menorah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. To consider and if appropriate approve a request from Living Wisely and Well on Planet Earth for the use of the Town Green April 27, 2024, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., to hold Earth Day Fair.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item eight, appointments, tax collector, Robert Imperato. This is for a four-year term as per section of 110-4 of the Code of the Town of Branford, effective November 21, 2023, through November 20, 2027. As we know, he changed this from an elected position to an appointed position. Bob Imperato was elected two years ago, and since then, I think, made many strides within the department, improving the department and the collection, has submitted a letter to the board outlining his accomplishments from year to date, has completed four years, four courses that are required to obtain prior to certification. The ordinance requires tax collector to be certified within four years of the appointment. However, he'd be eligible, I believe, within, by June, to actually sit and take the test and be certified by the completion of three years on the job. Is that correct? Bob, I hear Bob is here. I believe, you know, this, Bob was, you know, selected or elected by the people of Branford to serve in this position, however, his past two years has really proven to be not only competent in the job, but really has excelled in, as I said, making many improvements. So I wholeheartedly support it. I would entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have an honor to second it.
All right, it's an honor. Move seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, Bob.
Congratulations, Bob. Item 10, under other business, and we did not include it in the, typically at the end of the year, we have to do it by 30 days prior to our next, our first regular scheduled meeting. But can we get a motion, I would like to add to the agenda to approve the 2024 Board of Selectmen's meeting calendar to include the first and third Wednesdays of the month, excluding holidays, as our regular meeting dates, and with a start time of 4:30 p.m. and the location of the firehouse. I think we just have to approve the calendar, right? Okay. So I'd like to add that, if there's a...
I'll make a motion to add it.
All right. Second. Move seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, we just added to the agenda. Can we get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Thanks for... All right. Move seconded. All in favors.
Aye.
No comments from the public?
I asked, yeah, we're adding it.
If you want to do adjourn, you want from this, do adjourn.
Are you commenting on this item, or you want to just make a comment?
Is it to comment on...
No, good, yeah, I'll ask that.
Now it's starting at 4:30? Why don't you do it 3:00 in the morning, so nobody will know? But no, other than that?
Okay, that's your comment? Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I appreciate the time, and I think the, as we see in these meetings, require a lot of time from town staff to come here and present public. Historically, the, a number of years ago, the town, you know, Selectmen's meeting was at that time, for 4:30. It meets the, again, so thank you for that. All right. Any other business? All right. Yes. You have to come up to the microphone and identify. No, there was no, I skipped over.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and ma'am. My name's Daniel Alley. I live on Red Hill Road in Branford. I have a couple concerns that involve this past election. I noticed that there were, in the first district, numerous signs that were inside the 75-foot required area, and they were, surprisingly enough, all Republican. So my response to that, or my question is, is what, can somebody from your side of Yale explain to me how that happened?
Well, I think you recall that there was an issue where it was some signs that were placed in the island. I was made aware, you know, you came over, you threw them on the ground. But I believe in talking to the people who were standing out there, that it was cleared when they were placing the signs, because that is on an ark. It was okay by the, either the registrar or the moderator of the election poll. So they're the ones who had to enforce that.
Yeah, my understanding on that is that the moderator actually told the, that group of people, which included, this is the second selectman here, a police commissioner who's behind me, a member of the RTM first district, to move from that island. They were standing there, petitioning people as they come in, move from that island to get away from there. They did that and placed signs in its, in that, on that island instead. Now, there's, it is clear that the signs say, because they put up a board of education sign for your candidates in the, in the townwide election, a sign on top of the 75-foot sign. So it's not like they couldn't read the sign, well, maybe they can't, but that's no excuse for, and that's obviously inside the 75-foot area. So that needs some explaining to do, either to me, or maybe the SEC, or somebody, because this is not the first time it has happened. As a former registrar of voters, I've been aware of this situation for several years, and I've always had the moderators handle it. The moderator in this, in this instance was not trained by me. It was trained by somebody you hired from North Haven to do, to do the training. Evidently did not cover the requirements for the moderator to survey the area occasionally to make sure that signage is proper and in its proper place. So, and it raises a question, if a police commissioner, a second selectman, and an RTM member are sitting in front of that and make no comment about it, it seems to me that it's just maybe a blatant disregard for the rules? I'm not sure. You explain to me how that happens.
Explain how a sign is placed? Somebody placed a sign there.
Yeah.
I mean, I gotta be honest with you, right now, a sign that's placed in a location that moved on Election Day really isn't at the top of my priorities, Dan, so...
It isn't.
No.
It isn't. So fair, fair...
So if it's there...
Fair elections are not part of your...
I do not enforce that. The moderators do, and it was, it was handled. It was addressed, correct? So...
Oh, it was, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but twice. Twice.
All right.
Once the people had to move, and the other time, the signs had to move.
Okay. Well, that's, that's the purview of this board.
Okay, second, second item. In the fifth district, the town clerk was campaigning, after she voted, Lisa Arpin was campaigning in the fifth district, clearly against the rules and regulations of state statutes, clearly against state statute. In fact, for your edification, I will, I will cite the statute for you.
Again, this isn't the purview of this board, but I'm allowing you as a citizen to speak and make comments.
So you don't, you have no control over the town clerk?
Uh...
She's a member of your party? Could you possibly mention to her that she's violating the state statutes?
I will mention that you came today and made a comment that she was campaigning.
Okay, another, another issue. Well, I do have the statute right here. The statute is 9258C. It says, "No election official shall perform services for any party or candidate on Election Day, or appear at any political party headquarters prior to 8 o'clock p.m. on Election Day." She's obviously was outside doing that. The, and the primary for the fifth district for the Republicans, your HR director, Margar Laberta, was in that polling place unofficially and illegally. She went into that polling place, and I have numerous people that can document that and testify to that. Any explanation as to why that happened? Now, she is a staff member, so this does direct you, is directed at you.
Yeah, and this is the first I hear. So this is from August?
The, I believe that was, I believe that was a September primary.
September?
Yes.
So you're coming to a meeting, a public meeting, to address the board on the fact that the HR director was at a polling location in September 10th, 12th, the primary date?
Yeah, what, 12th, I believe it was. So finish the sentence. You will speak to her?
I'll look, yeah.
Oh, okay, good. Now, on this past election, she went into EDR and said, "Oh, I went to the wrong, I went to the wrong spot polling place." And she's voted in the first district several times now. So I don't know what the garbage is that she's trying to pull over the election officials' eyes, but that was, that has to be addressed. It's an ongoing problem. So it's not just one time, it's several times.
In the, okay, I'll look in there.
It's, you know, so these are violations of the state statutes. I know you have to get to dinner, but you know what? These are more important than your dinner. The next thing, the current registrar of voters for the Republican Party is incapable of doing his job. When are you going to address that issue? You have, the last, the last meeting that I attended, and we discussed this, you said that he was on disability.
I didn't say that. I say he's, he's, he's out on leave, but we have the deputy registrar that was covering for him. It's, that has nothing to do with you. That's not your, your concern as far as for the Republican registrar, right?
Oh, no.
It's elected by state statute.
No, that is my concern. That is my concern.
And is the deputy has been appointed, a deputy is appointed and been carrying out the task?
Well, except, except for the primary. Oh, yeah. You know, who ran the primary?
Yeah, the...
The Democratic registrar of voters ran the primary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Totally acceptable, state statutes, but go ahead.
No, no, if you read state statute, it says that the, when there is a primary of a particular party, it is the particular party's registrar who's responsible for running that. If two primaries are running simultaneously, different parties, then, then both, both registrars can work on that together. So that is not, so you don't have the state statute right, and I don't have that right in front of me, but I can give you that.
Well, as I stated before, the Board of Selectmen or the First Selectmen oversee the elections. They do not oversee that. The registrars do. The registers, I know, also, and town clerk submitted an inquiry to, I believe, the Secretary of State, asking that question. So the Democrat registrar was, ran that election, is my understanding, and so...
But it gets to the point, that, right, it gets to my point, that, that, so now it's a Democrat who's running a Republican primary. You don't seem that, that doesn't seem strange to you?
Mr. Alley, considering the circumstances, considering the circumstances, and that were unforeseen, with the, the primary, and the primary in the short time, I think they, they covered the primary, and they ran the primary as, as required to meet state statute.
Okay, let's get to the state statute, section 9-190C, removal of a registrar. Whenever Secretary State is of the opinion that a registrar of voters has engaged in misconduct, willful and material neglect of duty, or incompetence in the conduct of such registrar's office, the secretary may seek removal of such registrar from the office by filing a statement in writing to that effect with the State Elections Enforcement Commission. It goes on and says, and basically have 30 days, I mean, it goes on more. Well, it's obviously he's not competent. Your current registrar of voters for the Republican is not competent to do the job. He hasn't been on the job for nine months. Somebody has to address this. We have an election coming up in April. April, April 2nd, we have an election. We have early voting coming on. I've asked you several times about what, what do you advise for a early voting place, to hold early voting? You have not come back with anything, as far as I know, to anybody on that.
Again, yes, you know, responsibility of the registrar's office, correct? Responsibility, and I've worked with you to identify.
And when I suggested, and when I was a registrar, I suggested this to you, and you just said, "I'm not, I'm not in favor of a place we recommended." And in fact, not only that, but the depth, where the old post office slash Board of Ed building was. You said you weren't going to use that for early voting. Now, you've changed your mind?
I, in terms of request, no, that hasn't been brought forward, and as far as...
I'm bringing it forward now.
You're not the registrar.
Yeah, but don't you, don't you know your registrar is not doing the job?
And there's two registrars and two deputy registrars, correct?
There, there are.
And that's where the, that's whose responsibility this, so I know you like to, you come to the meeting, and I welcome it, and I go, "Sit here."
Okay.
And I don't, there's not a big rush for me to get to dinner.
Okay, good.
So, but, but you're bringing up something that's not under our purview to try to...
Who's, well...
The registrar, state statute.
Who's?
You just read the state, excuse me, excuse me.
Yeah.
You just read a state statute.
Yeah.
I did not hear board of selectmen or selectmen in that statute.
No.
Or Secretary of State.
Okay, so then we'll, so, okay, so that's the route, that's the route it can take, but I think it's a better route that you just, you handle this in-house. But if you think that it's better to report this to the state, then that's, then, okay, fine. I mean, and I can, I can do that. I can send, as a citizen, I can send a recommendation to the State Secretary of State's office saying, here's a, here's, and we have evidence that he has not been on the job for nine months, actually 11 months now. And we can do that. And then, and then they're going to go through this process, and that's going to be an embarrassment that you don't need, it's going to, it's going to be a black mark on our thing. I'm concerned because the presidential elections are coming up, and, and, you know, you're, we're standing on the railroad tracks, the train's coming down, and we're whistling Dixie. I mean, really.
Yeah, we don't have to do, we don't have to debate this all night, but I just want to address one thing.
Yeah.
As far as, I feel you're disingenuous as far as, you know, in terms of, you don't want to create an embarrassment, when meeting after meeting, you come to a public meeting, and you bring up the registrar and his, and personal conditions of that registrar in a public meeting. So don't sit here and lecture me about, you know, that we're not taking...
I did not.
You know what? Excuse me. I let you speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
And as far as, you know, that's the direction I, you know, I'm not going to handle in-house. No, Mr. Alley, I make a practice of not extending beyond what I have the legal authority to do. I stay within what the role of this office has done. In the past, the town has gotten itself in a lot of trouble over the years when, when elected officials extend their, try to extend beyond their powers. So that's where I operate from.
Okay, so your, your, your answer to this is you will not address this issue about, about a registrar who's not able to do the job? I, you look at, I have great sympathy for the, for the registrar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I work, I work...
Great way of showing it.
I worked for him.
Yeah.
I worked with him for a couple of years, right? But, but look at, it's just a matter of the person can't do the job, the job still has to be done. And what you're doing is you're burning out the rest of the staff. You are. And so when it comes to the elections next year, it's going to be a mess. Now, now, maybe that's okay by you. Maybe that's a Republican thing. I don't know. Maybe the elections kind of just, eh, they happen, they happen. I don't know.
You know what? Once again, just last word for me, you keep insinuating or making statements as if they report to this body, or, or this, the Office of the First Selectmen... as if they report to this body or, or this, the Office of the First Selectmen oversees. So when you make statements like you're burning them out, uh, you're, you're not, you know, they're not being held accountable, or whatever, you, you come in here month after month, the state is, is misleading to the public, and...
Well, okay, explain to me, has, has he, has he been in the office in the last six months?
And I, and I told you, he...
Has he been in the office the last six months? Answer yes or no?
As far as he, he has been involved, but he cannot, but he has also, we have a deputy, we're, uh, registers...
Who is retiring, who's retiring at the end of the, next month?
Yeah, and, and you retired, the deputy hasn't retired yet.
Right, right.
Eh.
And you didn't give him any grief about retiring. Um, so what happens, what, what happens?
Didn't give you any grief either.
What happens when the secretary, what happens when the secretary, uh, I mean, the deputy retires? Who's going to take his place? You have three months to run an election. Three months? Who's going to take his place? You think that elections are just a one-day event? They aren't. It takes months to prepare for an election. And I, I believe the Democratic, uh, uh, registrars are going to retire too, or just quit, and, and the reason being is he's burnt out, because he's running Republicans, uh, primaries, he's running this primary, there's nobody to help him, you know? Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Unless there's any other business? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.